Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 9, 2021 Board of Alderman Meeting, and I would like to ask everyone to join me in a place of allegiance.
One of the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we wish to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to ask the City Clerk to call a rule for attendance.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
Alderman Even?
Here.
Alderman Holman?
Here.
Alderman Hughes?
Here.
Alderman Mortland?
Here.
Alderman Perro?
Here.
Alderman Weisehan?
Here.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Here.
Mayor is presiding, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. And next, I would like to have everyone review the minutes from the July 26 meeting and seek a motion and second to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Hughes. Any discussion or amendment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and the minutes are approved. Before we go any further, I do want to take one brief minute to welcome Mr. Michael Zeltman as our new Director of Public Works. I think we're very fortunate to have him join our team. He has a lot of experience with the county and the city and with MoDAD, so welcome. Glad to have you on board.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I'd ask the City Clerk, are there any citizens that wish to address the Board?
Not that have signed up with me.
And I believe we have no public here in style. And no appointments?
No.
I would then, at this point, want to recognize the Board's opportunity to provide reports, if they so would like. Alderman Holman?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. I turned off the light a little too late. So I just would like to share that on next Monday, August 16, at 7:00 PM, we have a scheduled Public Works Commission meeting. However, it's a pretty hefty agenda, so we are trying to push that to a 6:30 start time. We haven't heard from 100% of our commissioners yet, so just please watch for notifications. They will come out and clearly state whether we're beginning at 6:30 or 7:00 PM. And at this point in time, I understand that it will be live here at the municipal.
Thank you. Alderman Allen? I'm sorry, Alderman Hughes?
Okay. I just wanted to remind everyone that the next concert is this Friday night, from 6 to 9, at Town Square. And there was an art showing that was held this past weekend at Longview. And it was on Saturday afternoon into the evening and Sunday afternoon. It was really good attendance, really good attendance.
I have a question about the concert.
Yes.
Have you bought tickets to the previous concert that was ranked out for being good for this concert?
Well, there to hand. If you don't mind.
Some people requested that it be transferred to this Friday, and some requested a refund if they were out of town.
Okay. I think I just left my ticket on the desk, and I'm just going to throw up that.
Fine.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
And then Alderman Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. The Voices and Means Commission will be next, what, 17?
Tuesday?
Tuesday. I'm sorry. August 17 at 8:30, and that will be here at City Hall. I also wanted to let all know that the first meeting for the veterans and active military and first responders test force had the first meeting this past week on the 3rd at Longview. We have a next meeting, 5:30 this next Monday, the 16th, over at Town Square. All of the members were there. This is asking it to be a test course on steroids.
Good. And I had some feedback from one of the members, and it was very positive. So I think it was a good start, an auspicious start. And Alderman Weisehan?
Thank you. So last weekend, or last week, the Parks and Forest Commission met, had an extensive conversation about the playground design that we'll be talking about tonight, really good input from the group. Also, just wanted to mention, on August 28, there's a self-defense class that we're going to try from a local gym. Ms. Nixon, Ms. Ward got that lined up. So you have to sign up by August 20, if interested. It's a two-hour class, so that'd be a nice addition to have. And then also, just wanted to thank Principia for, they had a volunteer session last Friday at Longview, cleaning up some of the fencing.
Oh, great. You know, that brings up a question, too, that is, because it sort of bugs me when I drive by, I wonder if we could maybe get the Board of Alderman to volunteer to do this, but along the fence there, there's a lot of mold. And I mean, I think we got out there with a bucket of bleach or something. We could make that fence along Mason Ridge Road look beautiful. I mean, it just kind of shattered, you know, I was thinking about that. Does Principia want to try that here?
Yeah.
And next, Mr. Sheldon, you have a report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Board. Just to give everybody a heads up, I had talked to the Mayor. And for our next meeting, we're going to have a couple of hefty items. We're going to be requesting a 6:00 PM work session. We do expect to have a report from management partners and an actual presentation, so we'd like to allocate a half hour at least for that, and any questions from the Board, and they will have a representative here. Also, we will have our Topping Road project, which will be reviewed by Public Works, and we want to be sure we give a full rundown and a complete picture of everything that's happened with Topping Road, kind of a management report on Topping. So we're going to be requesting a 6:00 PM work session on the 23rd to cover both of those. And we'll have information out to you all in advance of that.
Thank you. Next, we move on to unfinished business, and just want to talk about this for a minute. You know, we're basically in the process of discussing whether to commission a couple of our commissions. We talked about it at our retreat. I think there was a general consensus that makes sense. I've certainly talked with the Alderman who head up those commissions, and I've talked with Alderman Weisehan, who heads up Parks and Trails, about assigning some new responsibilities. I absolutely want to thank all the citizens who have served on boards about the commission, certainly going to send them a letter thanking them for their service. And also, if they have interest in serving, trying to find other areas or areas where they might serve. So I, having said that, I think we will go on then to Bill Number 2128, sponsored by Alderman Even. And without objection, would the City Clerk read the bill for the second time?
Bill Number 2128 is an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 125, Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the Town and Country Municipal Code, specifically by the deletion of Article 7 regarding the Community Art and Culture Commission.
And before I seek a motion to approve, I ask, after we get the motion approved, I'm going to ask Alderman Hughes to go and talk about it for a second. So a motion to approve? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Alderman Hughes, if you will.
Thanks, Mayor. As the current Chair of the Community Arts and Culture Commission, I did an outreach to all the members of the commission several weeks ago, kind of giving them a heads up that we had talked about this and it may be coming out live. And anyway, so recently, I had the chance to speak to several commissioners again, kind of bringing them up to date where we're at and about tonight's legislation. And some seemed to be kind of saddened, but some were kind of, I would say, seemed to understand. They didn't seem to have a big problem with it, a little on the sad side, though. And I reminded them, since last year, they implemented the photos of Santa, and this is all with COVID. So I mean, I look back, and I try to remind them that you accomplish things despite the fact that we're dealing with a pandemic. We were able to identify sites in Town and Country suitable for art installations. We've got a whole presentation on that. They developed and implemented a resident survey, which has been implemented as well. And again, all despite COVID. So this consolidation with Parks and Trails Commission, I've kind of tried to remind people that it will continue to address events that promote art, music, and historical themes. In other words, it's not being dismissed. And make recommendations regarding acquisition and display of public art. I think that's important. And I, along with you, Mayor, want to thank each and every one of the members of the commission, past and present, for all their time, talent, dedication, and commitment to the Arts in Town and Country.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion or amendment? I would ask the City Clerk for a rule call vote.
Alderman Even?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
Alderman Perro?
Aye.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance Number 4443.
Thank you. Bill Number 2129, sponsored by Alderman Perro. Without objection, would the City Clerk read the bill for the second time?
Bill Number 2129 is an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 125, Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the Town and Country Municipal Code, specifically by the deletion of Article 3 regarding the Conservation Commission and the Amendment of Section 125.270 regarding beautification program duties.
Thank you. And I seek a motion to approve in a second. Approve?
Second.
Second. Alderman Perro, do you want to make any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all the members of the Conservation Commission. They have been very dedicated for a long, many, many, many years to making Town and Country beautiful. They have had lots of great ideas, and there's certainly dedication there. Their primary concern, when I discussed this with them, and I will say first, that all of them that I was able to talk to understood and were in favor of the consolidation. They wanted to make sure that the programs that they were included in that commission today made it over to Parks and Trails. And the way that the verbiage is written for the ordinance changes, I'm confident that that's going to occur. So we're not going to lose any of those programs, and several of them expressed a lot of excitement about maybe being put on to Parks and Trails to continue with their serving of the city. I believe that this is going to be a favorable move because it will allow one commission to oversee beautification, the parks, the trails, the art, and kind of have a high-level consolidated view of the vision for Town and Country. And so I'm excited about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for those comments. And in terms of discussion and amendment, I believe Alderman Holman?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
It's a consider substitute bill.
Yes, I move to accept a substitute bill for Bill Number 2129 for everyone's consideration.
And I think, do I need to seek a motion for the substitute?
We just need a second.
Second.
All right. We have that, Alderman Allen. Any discussion on the substitution?
Mayor, for the record, can we just note, perhaps Alderman Holman will note what the substitute represents for the public?
No, please.
Okay. So the substitute redirects the administration of the beautification grant program to the Public Works Commission.
I think that makes sense.
You mentioned that.
Takes a little bit off of the Parks and Trails. It's only public looking, and so I'm in favor of that. All in favor of adopting the substitute, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any other discussion on that? And I'd ask the City Clerk for a rule call vote.
Alderman Perro?
Aye.
Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Here.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
Alderman Even?
Aye.
And Alderman Allen?
Aye.
The bill carries unanimously as substituted and becomes ordinance Number 4444.
Thank you. And we agree Bill Number 21-30. And without objection, would the City Clerk read the bill for the second time?
Bill Number 2130 is sponsored by Alderman Holman. It's an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 125, Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the Town and Country Municipal Code, specifically by the Amendment of Article 6 regarding the Parks and Trails Commission.
I think that Alderman Holman will move to consider a substitute bill?
Can we get a motion to approve in a second first?
Yes, we should.
I motion to.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I motion for a substitute bill for everyone's consideration for Bill 2130. And can I go ahead and speak to the substitute?
Please, please.
So with the changes in our Bill 2129, this triggers the substitution. And so it simply deletes the beautification grant program duties for the Parks and Trails Commission and speaks to their purview of Town Square.
Perfect. Right. Any other discussion on that substitution?
We need a second on that motion.
Sorry.
All in favor of adopting the substitution for consideration?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I would ask the City Clerk for a rule call vote.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Even?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
And Alderman Perro?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously as substituted and becomes ordinance Number 4445.
Thank you. Finished with business, Bill Number 2132. I would seek a sponsor. Alderman Mortland, thank you. And without objection, would the City Clerk read the bill for the first time?
Bill Number 2132 is an ordinance amending Title III, Traffic Regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Town and Country, specifically Sections 320.040, 340.190, and 375.170 regarding various traffic laws and violations.
Thank you. I think those would be completely, you know, just minor things to clear out. So Bill Number 2132 is continued to begin on Monday, August 23, 2021, for the second meeting in consideration. Next is approval of the liquor licenses for Wild Crush Bar and Steam Pump Blue Works. I seek a motion to approve?
So done.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
And Holman? Okay. Any discussion or amendment? My understanding is the Crush Wine Bar is going to have an occupancy permit like tomorrow?
Final inspections tomorrow.
And maybe open anytime after that. So I think that's a good addition for the city, for sure. Any discussion or amendment on that? I think we could just do this by voice, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Resolution Number R09-2021. It's a resolution authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to apply for the municipal park grant for a replacement playground in Dray's Park. I seek a motion in a second.
Approve.
Second for a second.
Second.
Thank you.
And just for the record, this is a motion to approve at this point?
Okay. And but we still do have time for discussion here in terms of if anyone ethical. We, all I know is we have a pretty hard deadline. It has to be done by August 23. So but I'm open enough for discussion about it. And Weisehan, if you would want to talk about it, that would be fine also.
Yeah, we have to, we had a, there's been a, Ms. Nixon sent out a memo in the packet, indicated a lot of input from residents, especially the Parks and Trails Commission. We, the most recent meeting that we had, a lot of discussion on which type of playground. It was determined that due to the condition of Dray's, Dray's would be the first playground of the series to be addressed, primarily for the surface. The commission determined a, came up with a solution with a, you know, a budgetary solution in mind on a much smaller ask than, or total project than what's being proposed in the event that that was the amount that we could get approved for. Having some conversation with Ms. Nixon as well, I think it'd be appropriate to follow the resolution that we have, asking for the total amount, especially after the conversations and indications she's had, the microculture to a 90-10 reimbursement as opposed to the original 80-20 that we discussed. So I'm absolutely in favor of it. The Parks and Trails Commission had a good discussion in favor of it, and I would encourage Ford to move forward.
Guys, just a question about, in terms of, if we put this new equipment in, which I think we need, I'm in favor of this for sure, but are we, maintenance costs, operating costs, other things are, we have a pretty good handle on that?
I have, yeah. We do. I would add to that.
I would expect the maintenance cost to be the same as maintenance cost that we have currently.
That's kind of what I'm looking at here. Okay. Thank you. Alderman Even?
So, Ms. Nixon, I'd like to ask, what led to choosing this particular playground design that we had, and how did that compare to the others?
Sure. So as I'm sure you saw in my memo, we had a good response. Bought different vendors, 10 different proposals. And so we looked through each one of those proposals at the Parks and Trails Commission meeting to evaluate it to see if the proposal met what was called out in the RFP. So for example, we called out a natural play area, and some were sort of post-of-platform type playgrounds, which is what you see in the parks now. And so that was part of the elimination process where the Parks and Trails Commission was to see how well the RFP or the proposals matched what we laid out in the RFP. It was whittled down to two lines of equipment. So what we tasked the commission with was to choose the lines of equipment because at this point, we're not choosing the specific slide or the specific swing, we're selecting the style of equipment that would go in. And they went through, narrowed it down to two, and then talked about a whole variety of contributing factors, such as how it fits in the existing park. It's, you know, it's the only park that has log cabins, and so that, they discussed a lot about the influence of the historical aspect. It's the only park that has a natural nature explorer play area in the woods. And so how the most natural play line matched with the sort of those two natural features in the park. I would say those three are the determining factors.
I have some questions.
Let me, got a couple ahead of you, I'm going to get to you. Alderman Whitmire?
So I would be interested to know if the plan that we have for us is roughly equal in terms of size and capacity to the playground that is in place today?
It is.
Alderman Perro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious about ongoing operating expenses, maybe a little more depth. This proposal, does it include the water feature or not?
It does not.
It does not? Okay. So with this new layout and all new equipment, is there any impact on our insurance?
The value of the equipment is approximately the same as the equipment that's there now, and so we itemize our assets based on the value to replace, and so it will be approximately the same cost for insurance.
Okay. So you're not expecting any significant change in our current operating expenses for Dray?
No.
Thank you.
Alderman Holman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And my questions are also for Ms. Nixon. A couple of questions for you. One, when I was looking at the memo and the recap, and you reviewed the history, and I appreciated that, and I understand that most of our playgrounds were installed in the late 90s, early 2000s, so we must at least address the flooring on those for safety purpose. And so that may have helped trigger where we are today with moving forward with the redesign. In the opening comments, it talks about a development of a playground master plan and recommends the Board of Alderman will see a presentation by SWT. Will that presentation come after you fill out, if you're awarded the grant, then they will come back to the Board after you're awarded a certain dollar amount and present a visual presentation of what Dray's Park will look like?
That's correct.
Okay. And then also, I'm just curious to understand, the commentary again is very broad and general about all playgrounds and a master plan for playgrounds, and then we jump right to Dray's. So I'm curious to understand, what is the plan and the rollout then for the other two playgrounds? Are they both being considered? What calendar year are those being considered for? Will they hit the same year financially? If you could share a little bit more with the board today?
Sure. So they're each addressed in the master plan. It's not complete because we're still in the middle of the process. Dray's was identified to be addressed first due to the surfacing issues. And so in the master plan, SWT will report what was collected from the first public meeting and the first round of public survey, and then what was reported back to the community in the second round of public meeting and survey, and then the recommendations from SWT as to what order the playgrounds would be addressed, and then some of the feedback from the community, whether they like an adventure playground or a natural playground, that sort of thing. And then it's up to you all, it's up to the city, to decide which playground we would address next. I know there's some conversation about preservation park, whether we address it at all, how we address it, those kinds of questions. And so that will be part of our budget process for looking out in our capital projections. So for this round, it will be Dray's Park only. This is the application for this grant cycle. Then it would be expected that subsequent years we would apply for subsequent playgrounds. And so whether it's preservation first or Longview first, the Board can direct that process.
Okay. And so just to repeat what you said, because that was another question that I had, is why was Dray's selected first? And what I heard is it really has to do with the equipment and the flooring that that was in dire need more so than the other two facilities. Is that fair?
It is fair. However, I will mention that preservation did actually score lower on the matrix for the evaluation process. However, due to the use of Dray's Park, it was bumped to be recommended as the number one grant application.
So then, do you anticipate, as you're going through the budget cycle, that in the five-year capital improvement part, that outlook that you will then have on there, Longview, and maybe, maybe not Dray's over there? So within five years, do you anticipate all three of those playgrounds being addressed?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And then, I'm going to make a statement. I'm sorry not to say it. But I feel like we've been down this road before with a municipal grant, where we were rewarded the money, and we did not have a definitive plan. And the plan was moving and changing, and it had to do with a sidewalk. And it was, they wanted to take an existing sidewalk to, the plan was, not they, the plan was moving a five-foot sidewalk to a eight-foot sidewalk, to no sidewalk at all. And there were a lot of moving pieces, and it wasn't definitive, and it wasn't laid out, and we didn't communicate it back to the residents before we moved forward. That plan. That plan dissolved.
It was costly, too, if I mean that.
Then, I will cite another project that we did, where we talked to the community, and we took a survey, and 960-ish residents responded back to, and it was about a 3.4-ish conceptual design of the town square. The Board, the eight that were in office at that point in time, came back a year or so later and voted on a $5.2 million plan. And now today, we are going through a stake audit driven by resident, a resident petition. So I don't want to end up in either one of those scenarios, due to the way we're approaching this, and I feel like we're repeating history, because I can't go to my residents today and say, I can tell you exactly what Drake's Park looks like, and I can tell you exactly how much it's going to cost, and now here's the grant, here's the funding mechanism for it, and we're going for this, and we're going to try and deliver this. What we're doing is we're capturing the money, and then we're going to roll it all out. And so if we're looking back at history, history is telling us, the residents don't like it, 840-ish, because now we're going through a state audit for one of those projects. And the other project was chaos every step of the way when I got into office. So, I'm not in favor of where we are today on this and how we're approaching it. Somebody talk me out of it.
I would like to make a comment, or the same thing.
You may, in one second. Alderman Whitmire had his line on first, and I guess you actually, Mayor, I'll defer to her.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, I agree with you, I feel like we're putting the plan on the back burner, and we're looking to capture the money. I feel like the normal process should be figuring out what residents are interested in, coming up with that plan, presenting that plan to the residents of the Board of Alderman, and then once we all approve the idea and the plan, we go forward moving with the money. We don't start a project on our home without understanding exactly what we want to do. So, I just feel like we need to get a master, I get times of the essence, but then we should have started this project a little bit sooner than where we are today.
Well, and I guess that in the bound to now, again, the question would be, if we're going to get this grant, we have to have it in by the 23rd of August, is there a sense among the Board of Alderman that we would have necessary information in terms of what it's going to cost by that date? You know, we, so we have, today is the 9th, couple of weeks, is that two truncated time? Or can we make that work in two weeks? Obviously, I think we don't want to, I don't think we want to just approve it tonight, I think we should continue until the 23rd. But the question would be, do we feel comfortable enough by the 23rd, we'll have enough to add to pull the trigger or not?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
Or actually, a question for Ms. Nixon. If we can't get it together, and if we don't vote it on the 23rd, then what is this to five days? Without me?
I would, at that point, request probably legal consultation, if we are a bit open, or if we need to close it for liability. I bet we're at that point. We have been repairing it for three years. And if I could just address two points
Please.
that are slightly different from the Mason Road Trail and especially Town Square, is that this resolution specifies the budget amount that the city is committing to and the maximum match that the city is committing to. And so if there were any change to the plan, that would be outside of those requirements, then it would null void, we would not enter into the contract. Secondly, the Board would see the construction documents, that would be the next point at which the Board could vote for or against the actual playground plan. And I didn't want to interrupt your sequencing earlier about when SWT would present, they would present certainly before the construction contract. So, it may be before we know even if we're awarded that grant or not, because we have the information that we need. And if you look at the plans that are called out in the RFP, they are set out to be a design-build plan. And so while the specific items of equipment haven't been selected, the square footage and the dollar amount allocated to each of those pods, if you will, has been. And so it may be Slide 103 instead of Slide 106. But I don't, it does not leave room for expanding the playground or changing the plan, if you will. The budget that would be utilized in the grant application matches what's called out in the RFP.
If I could, because I have five people who want to talk about it, the one thing I, which is great, which is great, I'm all for that, but I, one thing I want to be, I think I heard you clearly, that we know what our maximum cost will be, that there is no, like, oh, this is, this is okay, actually, there's another $200,000 we've got to add on. We are, we have a solid cap on the city's output of cash for this.
Yes, and it's the, it is all that Town and Country is eligible to apply for.
Okay.
So that is the cap.
Okay. Then I'm just going to go and order here. Alderman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. Will the city be responsible for planning costs upfront? So that if, at the end, the Board wants not in favor to move forward to the end, we could be out some money for plans?
Yes, that is true.
Do you have any idea?
I do.
So $31,000?
Yes, correct, I'm sure. All right, thank you.
Alderman Whitmire.
So, just to clarify the point, so the application is due on the 23rd, is that correct?
Right, that's definite.
And we need on the 23rd?
I'm sorry, no, that would be the last Board meeting before the deadline.
Okay, so we could defer this for two weeks if we so decide.
Right, right, absolutely.
And I just wanted to make the point that it has been our history, even for resolutions, unless, unless you're more of one's grinning at me under that mask, it has been our history to defer matters for two weeks.
I'm comfortable with that, I have no issue with that.
That said, while I'm probably one of the most conservative fiscal members of this Board, because this is, yeah. Because this is Drake's, I have less heartburn over moving forward with this individual opportunity, especially given that I've been told that this park is in the worst repair, and it has our most exposure, and it is a reasonably heavily utilized park. It is a rank immense matter. We can focus on that, and I could safely move forward, but I would prefer way two weeks.
I think, I think the key question across Boards is way two weeks. Alderman Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the resolution, Ms. Nixon, number five, if the grant is awarded, the City of County Country will enter into an agreement or a contract with Commission regarding said grant. So if, for any chance, you know, as we're still, you know, working through this, if the grant's awarded, is there still a possibility legally that we do not enter into the contract? So we still have an out at that point before, you know, we have the knowledge that we have it, but it's still another fail-safe point for us to, before we enter into that contract, and we approved that at the Board level, correct?
That'd be Mr. Garrett, if I can come up with that.
I understand your question, the answer is yes, it'd still be out the planning.
Okay, still.
I'm sorry, could you repeat yourself?
So, the answer is yes, if we don't enter into the contract with them, we will get the grant funds, but we will have spent the money on the plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen, thanks.
And that fee is $31,000?
Correct.
$760,000.
Alderman Wizehan.
I just wanted to mention as well, I agree and appreciate Alderman and Alderman, and all these people, and a lot of concern of the overspend in the past. As Ms. Nixon did mention, that we do know the cap on the project, and just to reiterate that the Commission did spend a lot of time going through, eliminating different things to get it down to a price, should it be less than the 420, at a much more conservative price, at a higher city participating amount, so, than what's before us now. So actually, if we were to get this grant approved at the capacity at the 90-10, correct if I'm wrong, but we would actually be, it would be a lower amount that the city would be participating in compared to smaller playground at the higher participating cost.
That's correct.
So just to make that clear.
Alderman, you there?
Nope.
Okay, so, pardon.
So, I have a couple of questions. Is it typical that we would apply for a grant prior to having finalized plans for any park procedure or plan or program?
I would say that we have plans, so what's required by the grant process is that you have a detailed budget, a public planning process, professionally developed plans, and secured proposals and/or bids. And so those are the items that we have in place. It is normal that at the very end of the process, if we know that we can swap, for example, a certain landscaping plant for another plant, those changes may still be made, as long as they fall within the dollar amount called out in the application.
But my question was, is it typical for us to go through all of this planning and not have it approved and applied for a grant? Or is it normal for us to then? My recommendation, I, maybe rather than just wasting time on it, is that in the future, it would be much easier for that type of presentation to be given to us as a whole, so that we fully understand what we're engaging in before we're asked to commit to $420,000 project, so that we can make an educated decision. I am not in disagreement, I feel like Drake's Park is a beautiful park, it does need repairs, so it's not that I'm opposed to that, I just feel like we're going about it backwards. It would be easier if we knew exactly what we're doing, that SWT would have presented to us ahead of time, and then we could make an informed decision, and you could be on time for your grant. When did we start this process?
The SWT design began in April.
Okay. And how many meetings do we have with the public? For opportunities for them to give their opinion? Four? And the application is due when?
It's the Friday of the 23rd, December 30th.
27.
Okay.
So I think that, as I stated before, I think that it does need repairs and new design. I like the design that has been presented to us, but I am uncomfortable moving forward saying that if we don't go through with things based on the plan, that we are out $31,000, given that we're in the middle of a state audit. I don't think that we have $31,000 just to gamble with. So, at this point in time, I would defer to moving into our next meeting and having some sort of further presentation by SWT, so we can understand what we're going to be getting into.
May I ask, if, what would be, what would you like to see at the next meeting? I don't know if I can make it happen, but if I can, I will.
Well, what you said, after the grant has been applied for, they were going to come to us as a Board, and they were going to do some sort of presentation. Is there a way to get that presentation to happen prior to our vote, so that we can make an educated decision rather than gambling with $31,760?
Is the question you'd like them to answer to specify the pieces of playground equipment on each part?
The design concept, the, what their plan is for making this, how long is it going to take? How is that going to affect us? I'd like a more concrete number prior to moving forward, and understanding what that concept looks like. I understand that there can be changes with plans, I can understand that there's going to be changes with certain pieces of equipment, fluctuation in equipment costs can, you know, that can change between now and the time we actually start construction, so I just would understand, want to understand a little bit more about what that's going to entail.
Thank you. I want to clarify one statement and just to comment, but, and if you're compiling a list, some of the things I was thinking about, and you probably already have some of these, timing costs, benefits of the recommended equipment, what age group is it targeting, any other additional associated costs, and then at a bigger broader scale, the rollout calendar for the grant request by park. But my, I want to say it again, that we, the City of County Country, had a municipal grant for another project. We were awarded the money, and then we told the municipality, you can have your money back, we don't want the grant. Why would we procedurally want to repeat that history? Because again, we're going through two audits because of that particular project. So to put the cart in front of the horse, procedurally, I can't get behind that. And then, number two, when speaking of the funds, and we can't, we'll be awarded a certain dollar amount, so let's say it's 400 grand, and, so is this a true statement that we're awarded $400,000, but during construction, we decide we want to add something else, and it costs 10 grand? And so we bring ordinance before this Board to spend our city dollars on that. Can't we do that?
Certainly.
Certainly. So that was my point about the 3.4 conceptual design of Town Square, and then it was a 5.2 reality, is that, I'm not saying that we'll overspend the grant money, I'm saying things happen when you're in construction, things happen when you're rolling out design. So something could come up where we want to augment, improve, do something, and then another ordinance comes forward, we're appropriating more funds, and history repeats itself. So, I just wanted to be clear on that, because I think we were all hearing that we couldn't spend one more dollar over what we're awarded, well, sure we can, we can spend our city dollars, we've done it before.
Twelve times on Town Square.
Yes, twelve times.
Twelve times.
Yeah, $1.3 million.
Well, Alderman, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question, is there contingency built into these numbers?
There is.
What percentage?
I will, I'll have to bring that to you, I don't know what percentage is built in.
Thank you.
Alderman Morgan.
So, there's more just statement, and just correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Nixon, so, I understand my colleague's procedural process and concerns, but overall, I'm going to flip the equation and look at it, we can either get the grant, save roughly, you know, $375,000 and get the grant to tap that, or we can choose to take out of our general fund $300,000 or our ongoing, you know, future capital to repair the equipment and servicing for Drake's.
Correct.
So, just, you know, and we'll get it both ways, from the process standpoint, but also from, this will cost us, you know, the difference of, you know, what is it, 60, $240,000, $234,000 on the decision.
Right. When you're looking at it just in terms of dollars, it just sort of seems to make sense to try to figure out a way to make it work.
to try to figure out a way to make it work, but I appreciate the comments on, hey, we all, we've had, I guess, and I don't mean to cast aspersions of people before me at all, but it seems like we've got some open-ended things that have kind of, not sat well, but uh, and so, yeah, so it seems, not correct, it seems illogical to walk away from 400,000 that we can get and put to good use. And so I really hope that by the 23rd, we can kind of get things in order, but I'm very sympathetic or very agree that, hey, we can't have some other, one more open-ended project, I get it. So I think, let's see if we can, within a couple of weeks, pull this together so it works for all parties.
Here, if I'm late?
No, no, they're all on the other side.
All right, I'm leaving now. Would it be possible, had SWT, we had a special meeting, and have them come in and make a presentation? They're accustomed to presenting at board meetings, they haven't before, we can certainly do that during a meeting, or it's to your?
See, I'm thinking of a special meeting.
I mean, the only, go ahead, but our next meeting is going to be.
So as I said previously, Mayor, we are going to be requesting a 6:00 PM start for your management partners report, which I think is timely and important, and we are also going to be requesting Topping Road to have your first and second meeting and to go over in detail the Topping Road master plan. So I think SWT, if they're going to present, which I am not saying they shouldn't, would be during the regular meeting on the, maybe as a upfront at 7 o'clock as part of this presentation. But I do think it's important to note, this, these park grants, just the way they are arranged, because I sat in on some of them, are, you apply for the grant funding, you know what the city's maximum is, as long as the city doesn't decide to spend more money, is the $42,000, and then you, as you, once you're awarded, you go forward and determine the specifics of what's the actual pieces of equipment. You don't have those upfront, what I'm hearing is some of you would like a little bit better idea of those pieces, of the contingency, and of the timing and the age group. So those are the items we have. Anything? So, I know I answered more questions than you asked, but I think 6 o'clock work session for the two items we have, SWT, 7 o'clock.
I'm good with that.
And then we have a bunch of public hearings.
Five.
I was actually thinking about between now and then, like within the next week or something.
I honestly, I pay you great appreciation for how incredibly stretched our city staff is right now, and what they're trying to do with the object and things. I just think it would be undoable, and honestly, I don't know what we would do with two or three folks that's sick and couldn't be here every day in City Hall. What would you do? It would be almost right.
I respect that.
So I get what you're saying, but I think we've got to, we'll just be here a lot longer. Alderman, you.
One last comment, or question. If for some reason this, we're not able to apply for this grant on time, when is the next opportunity for another grant?
Next year.
Okay. So it's a yearly?
Correct.
I would say, moving forward, that next time, try to get the design portion to us and have that presentation, so that we don't have this crunch towards the end.
I would say all in favor of continuing.
One second. Right now before the body, all of this discussion happened because we had a motion to approve in a second, so now if someone would like to make a motion to continue this resolution to the meeting of 8:23, they could. I would like to make a motion to continue it for next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's a little pause. The warrant list, the warrant list is an amount of $387,939.47. I seek a motion to approve in a second. Second. Great. Any discussion or amendment?
I have a question.
Please.
Can you explain the Missouri Lawyers Media, where it says there's an ad proposal for the playground design and budget, it's on there, 20, it looks like?
Well, I don't know.
Give us a second.
Oh, it's both the meeting time, we have the time.
Okay. And then I have another question, the.
I'm sorry, could you repeat yourself?
I'm sorry, they had two hearings?
We published it two weeks in a row for the RFP bid proposal. And then my next question is the Sam's Club member fees. Can you tell me, I see that there's a, it looks like a main account, but can you tell me a little bit more about these other fees that we're paying for, an amount of $40 for one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, so the different departments, so for instance, the police department has an account, so we don't have somebody from administration who has to go purchase on behalf of the police department. So those are various departments. Parks has a membership, so they can go buy what they need to buy.
Okay. One more question. The last concert that was, I guess, rained out, oh, it didn't have rain, they, we approved a fee to pay School of Rock, was that fee paid to School of Rock, or was that?
I don't know if it was paid, but I understand they have a contingency date they're going to play, so they're going to play.
Okay.
Alderman, Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just some comments about the warrant list. Frequently, we have, we notice different, the signatures that we're paying for the various utilities, and I talked to, Ms. Nixon, I talked to Joanne today, and Dr. Bob, and it seems like a lot of these big number, not all of them, but a lot of these big number items that we frequently see can definitely be a function of timing, of when users are red, of the way the various companies, vendors, charge different fees. We pay quarterly, we pay twice a year, and for the purpose, as we move forward into the budget process, for clarification and transparency, we're talking about having a way to see the whole cost of many, the maintenance cost, and not just the utilities, but trash pickup, so that we can actually see the expenses for the various parks and entities, and revenues where they exist. To me, this also is part of letting people in Town and Country recognize all of the benefits that we give our residents, and we give residents from every other city around too. So I hope that as we, I'm just trying to point out that we do have big numbers, I trust the staff, which Sheldon said last time, they adjusted some of the watering because, you know, there's been a lot of rain. I think that we, we know that our staff is working to make the best use of the resources that we did spend. I did have a question on the municipal league of Metro St. Louis, and I talked to Joanne, and that was 4820, and so that was for Town and Country's dues in the municipal league, and that is a function of the population of the city. So it seemed like a lot, but it is based on the population. I think that was all I had, I know there were just, you know, we have ongoing concerns about maintenance, and I think it's just a good time to point out all of the great benefits that the city provides to residents and the whole community, free of charge, with no resident pain in nickel to Town and Country.
I think that's a reasonable thing to point out. You know, I, certainly, I would have no issue without doing that, for sure. Any other discussion or amendment?
I, that's all right. That's the first time I've used it.
Yeah.
Wasn't used to that for a minute. On page seven, I'm looking at the dispatch fee base, it's $62,475, and then I'm looking at the dispatch fee for the third quarter of '25, so is that based upon the number of calls that they receive?
I think that's a set fee that we pay, isn't it?
So we have a set base fee, and then we have a, an additional, they call it usage fee, but what it really is, it's based on your sworn officers, so strength, we used to calculate it on calls, and that did this, so now it's just strength of your officers, how many full-time.
So I was trying to wonder, is this something that does a lot of that now?
Main assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to take a motion to close the meeting in a second, but before I do that, just wanted to see if there was any other items, anybody?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
You know, our city administrators send out weekly communications to us, and so in this previous communication, and I do have three questions, one is for our chief of police.
Yes, Mayor.
On the mid-year report that you sent us, one, I appreciate the information, but my question for you is, is, as I'm thinking about our newsletter to Board One residents, and my colleagues send out newsletters as well, what should be our takeaway, or what would you like us to, what messaging would you like us to share to the community?
I would say madam Alderman, that we, that we share the fact that in the auto theft being down 50%, that our message of education prevention is getting out there, that we, it took us a while, but with all of your support, with all of your strength of supporting us with getting the message out there on social media and through all of your, all of your monthly newsletters, I think the message of the locket or lose it, see something or, when you see something, say something, with our camera registration, the Ring doorbell, it is significantly helping. We all need to just keep it up, that the public safety is, is a partnership, that it can't be just all on us, and what we saw last year at this time were all absolutely crimes of opportunity that invited the criminal element back to Town and Country, and everybody's getting a hold of our concept.
Thank you. Good question. Two more questions. Well, actually, the next one is a request, as I was looking through the fire response times. I, I certainly have been a part of a conversation where we've had closure with the Fire EMS Task Force, I'm assuming there's closure there, but, you know, has that group been disseminated? Have we thanked them for their service? And then they put together, and I don't, when I say they, I really don't know, we put together the PowerPoint presentation, worth their recommendation, what is the city doing that, what is, what is the city's next steps? Do we want to share that tonight, or do you want to come back at our next meeting and share that publicly with what we're doing there?
I think, Mayor, if it's okay with you, I think the next meeting would be an appropriate time to give an update. Absolutely.
Great, thank you. And then lastly, Mr. Shelton, you provided as much information that you have at this point in time on the American Rescue Plan Act, and estimating around $2 million, do you have any indication at this point in time, what year that will come to us, whether it be this year, next year, or the next?
So Joanne, practically, I don't know, but we expect 50% this year and 50% next year. And then you have four years to allocate those funds.
That was my next question, because the language reads use it or lose it, so if, so in four years, we need to spend every single one of those dollars, correct? Correct. Okay, so then let me ask you this, because we are one of the few, maybe the only city that pays for our fire safety, and certainly COVID, the fire department was impacted by COVID, and they allocated funds to our cities for whatever calls and whatever they received. So my question is, when we receive those funds, will we be able to allocate some of those funds maybe to pay up a quarterly fire EMS bill?
So it's our understanding, even though all the regulations are not clear, this will be much different than the CARES Act money, the CARES Act money had to go to first responders. This will be, our largest eligible expense will be to recover lost revenue. We know we lost revenue of $1.5 million in 2020, we expect some lost revenue this year, we haven't calculated business license fees, so we will be able to recover lost revenue. How we actually allocate those expenses will be determined by this group during our process. But they will be different rules and regulations, which are all not clear, many of which we would not qualify for, because they address more broad topics such as housing and those types of things.
So possibly we could use it on that, if we come to year four and we haven't exercised all the funds, we could pay down our fire contract, and then that would increase our debt all the time.
I would think so, but I can't commit to that, that might be something we have to cover with our.
I would love to know the answer to that, I do receive information on that, on the funds. I guess that's it for now, on that. Thank you.
All right. Then, I now seek a motion to close the meeting pursuant to section 610.021, subsection 12, revised statutes of Missouri, to discuss contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege communications. Do I have a second?
Mayor, can I actually get a motion from one of the Board of Alderman members first?
Still moving. Second. Any discussion? Could I ask the city clerk or roll call?
Alderman, Morton.
Aye.
Alderman, Hughes.
Aye.
Alderman, Wetmeyer.
Aye.
Alderman, Perot.
Aye.
Alderman, Allen.
Aye.
Alderman, Evans.
Aye.
Alderman, Holman.
Aye.
And Alderman, Weisehan. It carries unanimously, and I'll note for the record that the board will not return to open session.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm retired.
Thank you.